But, uh, how did he plan? She had to get her up in the foyer to get her into with the bathroom. So she, uh...
Please rise. Would you leave us to the life that United States of America is very important for which stands one nation under our command.
Lord, bestow upon us your joy, happiness, and all blessings. Help us to experience the glowing spirit of friendship and love. May endless possibilities greet us. May joy and peace fill our hearts, our home, our city, our world. Amen.
Clerk color roll.
Here.
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 I'm present.
Thank you. Go with item one.
Notation that whole budget in the City of Fulton for 2000 was advertised for public hearing, you can tell that this meeting on December 28th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers over in New York. Mayor Stafford will declare this meeting.
I'm going to start the public hearing with a budget message, and then we'll go with questions and answers from there. During the 1999 budget message, I stated that I thought we had prepared a realistic and responsible budget for this year. Thanks to the combined efforts of our city employees, along with our elected and appointed officials, we project that we will favorably meet or exceed our budget projections. More specifically, we are projecting that our revenues will be $80,000 more than budgeted, and our expenses will be $100,000 less than budgeted. As a result, our fund balance will remain at about $1 million, and not be significantly reduced as originally anticipated. I attribute these positive results to all city employees, especially our department heads and the common council audit committee, consisting of Alderman Ronald Woodward, Alderman Harley Thompson, and council president John Lincoln. Their efforts to control costs throughout the year have certainly paid off. Thanks to all. For the year 2000, I believe we have again prepared a realistic and responsible budget to keep Fulton moving forward into the new millennium. From the many comments we receive from both residents and visitors, Fulton is moving in a positive direction, and we need to keep this movement going. As I mentioned during the budget workshop, we received requests from department heads for almost $1.2 million, more than this year's approved budget. It was very difficult to trim this budget, because I consider most of their requests to be legitimate, in their effort to provide better services to our taxpayers. However, striving to ensure that Fulton remains affordable to our taxpayers, we reduced the increase to less than $300,000. In a few moments, I will ask my executive assistant, John Crook, to present a budget overview. Following John's presentation, we will answer questions concerning the budget, and at the conclusion of the question and answer period and the public hearing, I will ask the council to pass this budget. In conclusion, I believe Fultonians are beginning again to feel proud to live in Fulton. This budget will continue to keep Fulton on the rise, helping to make it a nice place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you. John? John? Do you want to take this mic?
First of all, I think it's important to look at our last year's budget before we get into this year's budget. As Mike said, we did very well with our performance to last year's budget. We started January 1st, 1999, with a fund balance of $1,003,000. Our budget was that we would gain revenues of $10,534,000 and have expenses of $10,734,000, leaving us with a projected fund balance on January 1st, 2000, of about $800,000. So we had projected to reduce our fund balance during this year. As Mike mentioned, we have projected where we feel we're going to come with our expenses and our revenues. And sitting down with Jim LaBota, Joe Tietrow, and getting some input from our department heads, we anticipate that at the end of this year, we're going to receive revenues of $10,614,000, or as Mike mentioned, $80,000 more than budgeted. Looking at expenses, we're projecting that our expenses will be $10,634,000, which is $100,000 less than what we had budgeted. So based on this, we're projecting our fund balance to come in at about 983, and not the 803 that we originally projected, meaning it's going to be about the same that we started Coming this close in a budget, I think, is really good performance. We've watched expenses all year, we've been tracking them, we've been tracking revenues, and, you know, the audit committee has been auditing bills and asking a lot of good questions, and I think all that ended up with us performing well to our budget. Looking at the year 2000, starting with this fund balance, in the budget that's before the council tonight, we're projecting revenues to be about the same in the year 2000 as they were in 1999. However, our expenses are up from expenses that we have experienced in 1999. As a result, we're looking for, in the year 2000, this much more in increased taxes. That's $229,000. Even with that, we're still going, we're projecting that we're going to reduce our fund balance by a couple hundred thousand dollars. But, the game plan is to do the similar things that we did this year, and hopefully, we'll come out in good shape like we did this year in 1999. So we've got to watch our expenses, and we've got to keep tracking our revenues to see where we are. With that in mind, I'd like to look at what's in this $11 million budget that's different from what we have in this year's budget. A summary of the larger items that are in the budget in the year 2000 that were not reflected in the 1999 budget. In 1999, we had a contingency of $171,000. Next year, we want to increase that by $103,000. We have all our contracts coming up, and if we experience any miscellaneous problems like we did in '98 with Kamenek Building, and we would not have to go out and bond for those things, we would be able to cover those kind of things in contingency. Last year, in an effort to keep taxes down, we took the two police cars that are normally in the budget, out of the budget, and bonded for them. Not wanting to keep bonding and putting the city in long-term debt, which costs us more money, we wanted to get these two police cars back in the budget. They've been there for a lot of years, and they really belong there, because you need to replace two each year. We moved the engineering helper. We transferred that position from the water and sanitation budget into the general budget where we felt it belonged. We also added a position of city engineer, and as we, the total salary for the city engineer we're projecting at $56,000. But we have some other things in the budget where we're not replacing a code officer, so that we don't need to budget the full amount, just the difference, which is $30,000. We wanted to put a comprehensive plan in our city budget. We felt this is necessary. A lot of times when people come into town and want to start new businesses, first of all, they have to go to the county, and the county says, "Where's your comprehensive plan?", and it takes a little more time. So they're looking for a comprehensive plan, and we really need one for our city. We also put in $10,000 for a city marketing plan. There's a marketing group who, in the city, composed of the Chamber of Commerce, some elected officials, that is looking at marketing Fulton, and what our goal is, is to provide some money for that group and bring in some more retail into our city. By doing that, this money can make money. Contractually, this year, we have some life insurance policies that we have to provide to our city employees. And then miscellaneous for $34,500. A breakdown of about $5,000 each of an increase to the library. We need new mowers in the city to mow the parks, and some of the residents that don't mow their lawns. Lake commission, legislative advertising is up. The legislative committee has done a lot of work in creating new laws that we have to advertise. Hospital disability is up. A single audit will cost us more. We put some seasonal employees in for the recreation department. And court repairs is costing us additional money next year. So that's a synopsis of where the increases are, to the tune of $288,500 from our '99 budget to our 2000 budget. As the mayor said, we cut this from $1.2 million down to less than $300,000. When you do a budget, people always ask, "Are you adding positions?" If you look at our general budget and our water sanitation budget, which are the two major budgets that the city has, we have a net effect of no change. We're adding one to the general, that was the engineering helper that I mentioned earlier, and that comes out of the water and sanitation budget. The city engineer is a new position, but as I mentioned, we deleted one code officer. We also moved a clerk in the code office to the mayor's office to have as a floater. We've noticed that throughout the year, people come and go, and if we have a floater, we can backfill with that person. It's not an additional position, but that is exactly what happened this year. We used that person to fill in in the water department and in personnel when people left the city. So totally, we have a net effect of the same number of positions in 2000 that we have in 1999. Okay, looking at the effect on taxes. We said we had to generate $229,000 more money in taxes. Our present tax rate is $11.62 per thousand. The proposed tax rate will go to $12.43 a thousand, or an 81 cent per thousand approximate increase. Our total assessed value in the city is about $284 million. Times the 81 cents, it'll get you the, close to the $229,000. And lastly, what kind of impact will this have on the average homeowner? The average home in the city of Fulton is assessed at approximately $60,000. Divided by 1,000, times 81 cents a thousand, is about $49 per year increase in taxes to the average homeowner. Or, we just calculate it out, about a dollar a week. And that's a 6.9% tax increase.
Thank you, John. Now we will open the hearing for questions from the audience, or input from the audience.
I have a question. What were the, um, state my name or anything? I have one question for, I want to know what the increases were, the sales tax increases for the past three years. Could you tell me what they were? Do you have any idea of the approximations of them? Yeah, the tax increases.
Sales tax increases?
Property tax increases.
Property tax increases.
Well, last year, it was a little under 5%. The year before that, it was a reduction of 18%. The year before that, I think, was about even. I have to look back, but...
Thank you.
I think I had looked at, from '94 to '99, we maintained zero tax increases. The increases in the large decrease, we had for 1980.
Are there any other questions from the audience?
Ed Fraley, 981 East Broadway. What is the life of a police car in the city?
Right now, it is running about 10 years. By the time they get done, they don't just stay with the police department. Once they're retired from the police department, they are transferred to other departments.
If that be the case, wouldn't it be smarter to bond the two police cars?
Well...
For the life of...
We could, we could...
Take it three years, or four, whatever you want to do.
We could keep on bonding, but what we're trying to do is get the smaller equipment back into the operating budget where it has been in the past.
But a patrol car on the street that runs 24 hours a day, how long does that car, what do you anticipate the life of that car to be, let's call it a pursuit car? One year, two years, three years?
Two to three years, I think, the way it's been running, and then it gets transferred to other departments.
Yes, but for that two-year life, let's say two years, wouldn't it be smart to bond for the life of that vehicle?
Well, as I said, we...
Two years?
We have to bond for the large-ticket items.
That's large ticket, $50,000.
Well, that's two cars.
Yeah, I don't care, $25,000 is a big ticket.
Well, it's not as big a ticket as a fire truck, or a snowplow.
Oh, I realize that, but...
You know, that's, we're trying to get away from bonding, especially...
Sometimes bonding's smart.
Well, I understand that. We're trying to get away with the small stuff.
Okay, we ain't going to beat that anymore. The sole reason I came here, I've got gray hair, I'm a senior citizen. I'm a little concerned over the fact that you rescinded the sales tax. I saw the figure, what, about $100,000? You estimated?
That's a very high estimate. A very high, that's taking everybody's number that...
Everybody who provided a number to the city, rounding it way up, and then doubling it, would get you maybe $100,000 if you stretch.
Well, let's use that figure. The people that are going to take the hit on that is us gray hairs. The last I checked downstairs, and this is a year or two ago, approximately 50% of the homeowners in the city are senior citizens. If you applied, say, quote, $100,000 to your revenues, instead of a rescinding of a sales tax that frankly doesn't mean an awful lot to either the merchants or the people that are buying. I worked in the retail business for 35 years, so I think I can speak from experience. Each senior citizen this year, I didn't get my statement yet, so I can't give you exact figures. We get a 2.7% increase in our social security. It is practically offset by Medicare and some other thing that they got in there for medical costs. I know in my personal case, my supplemental insurance, over the year, will cost me above $350 more than it did last year. Prescription costs for senior citizens is just unbelievable. I stood behind a poor lady in one of the drugstores here a couple of weeks ago, and she was writing a check for $110 for a prescription. I just got a prescription two weeks ago, it was 78 bucks. That's, and all the older people have the same problem. You don't go to the Towers, or you don't go to the mill, or you don't go to Meadowbrook to get senior citizens' opinions on housing, because they've all been priced out of their homes. That's why they're there. And with this budget, you could enhance the position of senior citizens by helping them stay in their homes, instead of tacking on another, whatever it is, per year taxation. It may sound small, but to somebody that's on a minimum social security check, it's a lot of money. I think you ought to rethink that, that, uh, I've talked to some merchants today, and they weren't too concerned whether it was there or not there, really. Doesn't affect them at all. So I suggest maybe take another look at that. My thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
I apologize, Joel Rehm, I'm from the Pal Times. I wanted to know a little bit more about the marketing. I wanted to maybe, what stage it's at, if you have specific agencies in mind, maybe, how much you hope to raise by it, by the marketing budget, or if that's still in the initial stages? Has that gone anywhere beyond, you know...
Initial stages.
Initial stages?
The marketing plan here?
Exactly, yes.
There's a marketing committee that's working on this. They've been waiting to see if we're going to put this in the budget for them to work with.
Who's going to determine who markets that, the city? Now, are they going to stay local? Will they come back to...
$10,000 is not a lot of money to spend on marketing. That is zero.
Now, was the chamber...
There are companies that spend a lot more than that to do, you know, the marketing program.
That was a...
Or shares alone, you'd get that on...
Right, right. Now, was the chamber putting in any money towards this marketing plan?
Not into the marketing. They, uh, part of their budget is used for marketing of the city, but not what we're going after here, going after the retail.
Mayor, I just want to clarify a couple of things. I would do it to Mr. Fraley, but he showed up to get his TV time and left. But for the other people here, a couple of things that he mentioned. First of all, I'm a little offended that he mentioned nobody goes to the Towers or the Mills. Ed, do you go to the Mills at all?
I was there this morning.
I go to the Towers every other month. Secondly, as far as the sales tax goes for clothing, you'll see that in this budget for the year 2000, we've actually increased our estimated sales tax revenue by $200,000. So, any decrease as a result of waiving that exemption is a not event. Right now, we're running about $246,000 ahead of last year. We're still expecting to get $200,000 more next year than in 1999's budget, so we're not going to miss it. In fact, if we did, to try and get a handle on it, we did really guess and round everybody up. If you use the numbers that all the merchants provided as actual true numbers, entrusted them to tell you the truth, you'd be looking at, in the first year, about a $30,000 impact. That's the same amount of money roughly as last year in the 1999 budget, when we eliminated building permit fees. That was about $30,000. So for somebody to say that you're pushing the sales tax thing onto the only people who pay tax, these are the same people who thought it was a good idea to get rid of building permit fees last year. The numbers are about the same, and $30,000 in the first year, if that's a true number on an $11 million budget, $30,000 could be an extra afternoon of overtime in a snowstorm. It's, it doesn't really matter.
Thank you.
We're expecting to come in this year at about 4.6 million. Next year, coincidentally, you budgeted about $30,000.
Yeah, $30,000. It just works out about that number. The budget for 1999 was $4,358,000, and that's jumping up to 4.6 million in sales tax.
John, aren't we actually down one position in the city when Dan Vaughn left? We did not replace him. We had the fire chief doing that job, the door roll.
That was last year.
That was last year. We eliminated that one this past year.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that's why, that's why the engineer would be absorbed by the other code enforcement officer's job, not the bureau chief, because the bureau chief we eliminated last year.
Yes.
What I'm saying is, we have fewer employees than we did a couple of years ago. Yes, yes.
I believe our full-time employees are at about 168 right now. Any other questions? From the council?
Well, I had a concern, as the council knows, and the mayor and John Crook, when we had the workshop, that I felt that we should look at the position of city engineer and ask ourselves, is that a position that we need? And I got, you know, responsible answers back from John and some of the other aldermen that this was a position that they felt that would save us money, because this, if it's a structural engineer, it's a position that we used many times during the year. So, I don't know, John, can you, or maybe Harley can indicate about an approximate amount of money we might be saving by creating this position? And I also realize that we're combining it with a code enforcement officer, which certainly makes it a reasonable...
If I went strictly off the top of my head, between the Fulton Mall property, we had a structural engineer at the Kamenek property, the lamplighter, every house that the city looks to take down, you have to have an engineer take a look at it. I would guess that over the course of the year, we spend 50, 75, 80,000 in engineering fees alone, and if you consider that the net increase for a city engineer is about $30,000, I would say that we could save $30,000, $40,000 by doing it that way. Because even though, even though you are paying an engineer, you're not paying the outside fees, because if we had a structural engineer, that person would be qualified. Look at a house like at 217 Buffalo, that was taken down a couple of years ago. The prior administration, 1997, I believe, at the end of 1997, wanted to take down 217 Buffalo, and there was another house, and John Sullivan was the city attorney, and they were ready to take it down, and he said, "Wait, wait, wait, we have to have an engineer." Because at the time, our bureau chief, although he said it was good enough to take it down, his word wasn't good enough. The lawyer didn't think that that would hold up in court.
Legally.
Because he wasn't a qualified engineer.
Right.
And with a structural engineer on staff, also filling that job as code enforcement person, would be able to go over there and say, "Yes, it's out of code. He needs to come down," and we wouldn't have to worry about the opinion being unqualified. So that engineer would be able to not only issue the citation for the code side of it, but would also be qualified and legally able to say, "Yes, take it down." He wouldn't have to, it would also take out one of the delays, because I believe there was about a six-week delay from the time that it was supposed to come down to the time it actually did. So six more weeks that the neighbors had to look at that house.
How specialized are engineers? Can a structural engineer do other engineering activities, or...
Yes.
Yeah, they got, they're licensed, and there are other areas they can be in. I'm not an expert in it.
We should be looking for a civil engineer. He will give you the ability to... He will give you the ability to pack structurally and look at your streets and things like that, too. So we should be looking for a civil engineer.
I, I think that's what I was getting at, because I talked to, uh, some people, and that's what the recommendation from them was, that if you're looking at an engineer, probably a civil engineer would be the most, uh, appropriate for a number of different, um, projects that we might, uh, have.
To follow up on that, I would say, and this is just purely my opinion, but instead of getting hung up on, are you a structural engineer, a civil engineer, a aeronautical engineer, whatever, can you do the code department and still take down a house without having us to outsource to BB&L or somebody else? We want somebody who can handle really what we need them to, and that's codes and taking down houses, taking down, you know, buildings, and not necessarily just houses either, because the Fulton Mall property obviously isn't a house, but somebody that's qualified to look at that, and also the water and sewer lines, streets, uh, the bridges.
Yeah.
Somebody that can have a, a pretty good knowledge of all of that and have to outsource the least amount.
Yeah.
I think another area would be someone for a stamp or...
Stamp a plan. Yeah, because right now, any contractors that come into the code department, in order to get a permit, they have to have stamped plans, and we can't stamp them or approve them, because we don't have an engineer.
Our planning permission requires a second one.
It has to be stamped by an engineer.
The only, the only thing that you wanna realize is, uh, I think we need an engineer. I did have, uh, one person complain about it, that didn't think it was a good idea. And this is something that's kicked around for years. I always thought we needed an engineer, but e- even if you have an engineer, you are still gonna use outside people at times. You will need to. And I still think you're gonna save money by having this guy. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I just think that the person that is hired should be the person that will allow us to contract out the least amount.
Right. Oh, yeah, I think you, you will, James. But in, in the, in the code enforcement alone, I think with the buildings we run after, I think it would be quite a help to us.
I think from what I understand, too, that, um, if we get this person, it probably will cost us more than what we budgeted for.
Because we have a bigger contingent.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think you're right, Bob.
You know, I'm not saying that I'm, uh, that I'm saying we shouldn't, we shouldn't fund this amount for a city engineer, but I'm just saying that we need to be careful and we need to get the right person in the job.
To be honest with you, fifty-six thousand in Fulton, New York's not a bad wage. I think that's a good place to start.
We need, we need the qualified individual. We need somebody with qualifications, because right now, that department doesn't have it, and we're strapped as far as, we're limited as far as what we can do with that department. Their, their hands are tied.
I think what I, what I do like is the fact that he, that we're asking him to do also code...
Mm-hmm.
...which we have needed a person in that position.
It's also gonna save us a little bit of money by not having to pay the fire chief extra to be that department head as well.
Right.
'Cause I believe his contract was for an extra fifteen.
Did we pay that, we paid that last year?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
No?
No.
I don't think so.
I thought we did.
I'm fine with that.
Any other questions?
Is the mayor's, mayor's office gonna keep track of the floating clerk? Keep track on the record?
That, that person, uh, will be used in the departments that are necessary. Uh, that person, uh, that position was, was, uh, budgeted as a floater last year between code, the fire department, uh, recreation department, and was gonna be in the person, or the clerk's, uh, office due to people being out for extended illness and then, uh, some of the vacancies that we, uh, that occurred. That never happened. The person ended up having to go, uh, and fill the vacancies due to resignations and, and sickness. Uh, why it was moved to the mayor's office was just so it didn't get locked into one department, and we can determine which departments need the help and, uh, do the scheduling.
Right, but you're gonna keep track of where they go.
Yes.
Keep a record of that. There's one other thing that I'd like to say about the budget, um, and that's the Christmas lighting. Uh, as many know, um, I'm concerned about the, uh, Christmas lights and, and having that in our budget, but I, what I would like to say is, I'd like to get the chamber more involved in it. Um, you know, to me, twelve thousand dollars is a lot of money, uh, and, you know, Niagara Mohawk kicks in, uh, some, actually, they kick in, uh, some free lighting for us, um, and they help out that way. Uh, what I would like to do, Mayor, after the first of the year, I'd like to have you send a letter to Mrs. Payne. She's who have become the new president of the chamber, and maybe we can sit down and work with them and getting some, uh, help from them, and maybe a financial way or something. And I would also like to see businesses on the west side of, uh, town, particularly in my ward on Hannibal Street, from Hannibal Street to Hart Street. In my business district, I'd like to get some Christmas lighting over there. I think that we can, uh, compromise and have the chamber work with us, if you can do that, please. I'd appreciate it.
Certainly will.
I would also say, like to say something about the Christmas lights, and I, I appreciate John's concern, and I think it, uh, was valid, uh, in, in the workshop that we had. Um, my thought, and I had, I had a number of people that commented on the lights, um, I think it's a community, um, advantage for us to have them. Um, it creates a holiday atmosphere. It's good for our downtown. Um, I had a number of people that asked, uh, that asked for additional lights downtown with the, uh, with the new downtown that we have, and I understand that, um, that Ron Woodward, uh, had, had, um, some information on that. I know that he and Kathy Trowbridge, uh, back in, I think, ninety-six or so, started working on, uh, evaluating the lights and placement and, um, actually determining what lights...
Actually, these are, that contract, I think, this year.
Determining what lights that you wanted, and I think you did a great job in doing that. So I, I guess what I'm saying is that, um, to follow up on what John is saying, I think that we do need a cooperative effort from the chamber, and that if additional lighting is to be put up, then certainly we should look to them to provide that lighting, and that I think that the city, as a city, uh, we provide the lighting that we do now. If additional lighting is gonna be used, it's gonna be downtown, it's gonna be in areas that, uh, John is talking about, then I think the chamber should definitely get involved.
Basically, Bob, there's a folder on that, and for many years, the city would budget a certain amount they'd give to the chamber for lighting, and then they would, there is a list, would the, what they solicited from the merchants, that each merchant actually gave, and then somewhere in the ninety, early nineties or late eighties, they decided they no longer wanted to do it, and they, they turned it back over to the city, and we've been doing it ever since. I did talk to, uh, the director here, I think, uh, ninety-six to ninety-seven, and they spent a summer looking at it and give it back to me and decide they didn't wanna do nothing more. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't pursue it anymore. I'm not saying the whole thing, but at least some contribution. Downtown this year, Joe Tieto did get a, uh, a price, but the, the fixtures that we have didn't fit downtown. The price was quite high. It was like six thousand dollars or something like that.
Is that because the new, the new, uh, lamp posts?
Yeah, and that, we'd be better off, uh, we've gotta do a whole new contract now after this year anyway, and probably be cheaper if we did the whole thing, you know what I mean?
But that was a purchase.
Was that purchased, Joe, or?
No, that, no, there was...
Was that purchased?
There was, uh, there was, the first one was a contract, and then they gave us another one for purchase.
Oh, okay.
They gave us a second price.
Yeah, and, and after the first year, it would be cheaper, Mike, 'cause they have to make fixtures for them, to hold them, and then after that, the fixtures are paid for them.
Did, did we at one time buy, buy lights?
I don't remember when we ever did. I don't remember, I don't think when the chamber did it, we bought them, but at the time, when the chamber gave it up, the council was very displeased with the lighting they were getting, so it wasn't all their fault. They, the council didn't, didn't really like what we were getting, and a lot of the residents did. So that's one of the things, I think, that, that they, the reason they give it back to the city.
I think if we, you know, I think the, the, the whole basis of community is sharing of, of assets and sharing of concerns.
I agree.
We constantly strive for that. We, we wanna work with the school district, we wanna work with the Chamber of Commerce. So I think this is just one more thing that we can, we can point to and, and ask for their cooperation. As John has pointed out, they're the strongest that they've ever been right now.
Yeah.
They've got the all-time, an all-time membership, and I think that, uh...
Well, next year'd be a good time to start, 'cause it's a whole new ballgame. This contract is done, and we can look at everything, you know?
Yes.
And me, like...
Any other question? Any other input? Hearing none, I would like to thank everyone for their interest and participation in this public hearing, and I declare the public hearing closed.
Resolvent, adapting the budget for fiscal year two thousand, making appropriations for the conduct of city government, establishing the rights of compensation for officers and employees subject to negotiations with a known amount of salary schedules to advance your budget back, whereas the governing body has meant to consider its lieutenant budget, conduct that public hearing thereon according to the city charter. Now therefore be resolved that lieutenant budget is amended and revised in this year and after set forth is hereby adopted, and is several amounts for the objects and purposes specified in the salaries and wages subject to negotiations as scheduled to, and that budget shall be and hereby are fixed, leaving the amount shown therein effective January one, two thousand.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Res, county council, city of Fulton, is theretofor, heretofore adopted city of Fulton budget for fiscal year two thousand, and heretofore adopted a resolution making appropriations for conducting city of Fulton government for fiscal year two thousand, whereas the amount of taxes to be levied in the city of Fulton for the city government purposes for the year two thousand has been established, an amount of three million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Now therefore be resolved that said sum of three million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars for city government purposes, the year two thousand being, the same hereby is directed to be levied and raised by general tax on all taxable properties according to the valuation on the assessment goal for the current year according to section C forty-six of the city charter of the city of Fulton.
Motion?
I'll, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolvent, the mayor be authorized to sign the renewal agreement between the city of Fulton, upstate administrative services as third-party administrator for the city of Fulton's medical dental insurance plan effective January one, two thousand, to expire December thirty-first, two thousand. If further resolved, that the mayor be authorized to sign the aggregate stop loss and the specific deductible loss agreement between the city of Fulton and Life Insurance Company of Boston in New York effective January one, two thousand, to expire December thirty-first, two thousand.
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolvent, person who are involved in CSEA contract, Valerie D'Imperio, Fulton Police Department, is hereby authorized to attend QD, Community College, to take the principles of accounting through course.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolvent, the city chairman wants transfer eight hundred and thirty-five dollars from the A twenty-seven oh five gifts and donations account with the A twenty-nine eighty-nine Police Department, Harico.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it. Second. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolvent, chapter one sixty-five, subsection one sixty-five fifty-nine, schedule fifteen, entitled no stopping, be amended to read as follows. Name of street, Route number forty-one, side, east side. Location, Route forty-one northbound between Route three and Main Street.
I'll move that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolvent, the city clerk's report from the month of November nineteen ninety-nine, the amount of six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, fifty-seven cents, is hereby received, moved to place of...
Motion?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Res, inauguration day is scheduled for Saturday, January one, two thousand, at twelve noon, and county council chambers now therefore be able to solve that the county council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January fourth, two thousand, is hereby changed to January one, two thousand.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to bring before the council? Is there anyone on the council that has any information to bring before the council at this time?
Well, I just would like to comment, um, uh, this budget, I think that, uh, the mayor, department heads, John Crook, and all the city employees, I think they did a heck of a job this year for the city, and, uh, hopefully they'll keep it up for the year two thousand. Excellent job.
Thank you, John. We certainly will try. Anyone else?
No.